All right, great. We will now call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Capital Treatment Committee on January 31st, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And we have all of our members here except for Jim Dulek and Melissa McKinnon is not here. And Jen Gudriel is not here. She did say she was gonna try to join us after the meeting she's in downstairs. So, let's see, do we have anyone present to speak? Anyone in line? Okay, so then we can move right along to approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of January 10th.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion about the minutes? I just want to say they're really good.
They were very, very great.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, anyone opposed? Okay. Oh, it's definitely.
Just join the board, so I'm staying.
Okay. All right, so project presentations by department, Public Works. Troy is here to tell us about the things he needs.
Are they in order and how you want to go, or is there a specific way?
You know, I don't know what order we're in. You can just go however you want.
So we'll just start with the 22-4. That's the stormwater.
Okay.
Okay, so this stormwater, this is for the transfer station. And there are two oil-water separators, and they're supposed to be for the compliance for MS4 permitting. They've been ongoing since 2015. I put it out for year two, so next year. I mean, we really need to start like doing more with our MS4 permitting, especially being at a transfer station.
Yeah.
So it's one of those things that, you know, Public Works, we can put them in, we can buy the pieces. Carl with our engineering, you know, we can figure that all out where it goes and stuff. But it's just buying the pieces. He told me to raise the price a little bit due to the fact of just because everything was the price of everything. Basically, that's about it really for that project.
Is the basis this pricing based on this year's pricing?
Yeah, basically, yep.
You feel confident that if this gets pushed out that we?
Yeah, it would. We added a little bit just to make, you know, make sure. It could come under a little bit, but we just gave a double bumper for next year.
What do you actually have to do for, what's the construction?
They're catch bases. They're like stormwater. So when the water goes in there, you know, with our permitting, that it catches the oil and everything else that comes through.
As usual, like a two-tank.
Two-tank it, absolutely.
Now, any other questions about that one?
The fact that you guys can do that in-house is.
Good, yeah, it's great.
That should be.
Might be some little distraction at the transfer station.
That's a project you're doing.
Do you have some lay-on pipe into it, like trenches you have to dig or something?
Well, there's catch basins there, so they'll go off of that, those catch basins, and they'll go into those tanks. So instead of right now, they go in and then they just go out into the woods. So now these, that water will go into the tank and then distribute. So there is pieces of play. But they won't, it's not long runs now. They're kind of going within a distance of where the basin is now.
Okay. Next one.
All right. Okay, that was 22-5. This was the bus lot paving. It's been on there since 2017. There is, we've had tractor-trailer trucks going in there. They're kind of raising havoc with it. We've done some signage, but there's holes, the water pockets in different areas. It needs to be ground up, you know, regraded where the basin is so the water can flow in there. Pretty basic project more or less. It's nothing really too involved, just having a contractor come in, pulverize the asphalt and repave it.
And is it, is it paved now?
It's paved now, yeah. We patched a lot of holes. The gentleman who runs M&amp;J Bus this summer wrote a letter saying that, you know, there was a lot of holes and stuff. So we went patched, you know, everything, but there's still, it holds a lot of water. If you drive by there, even like right now with the snow melting, it's not really pitched to where it has to fall.
Yeah.
So the water's not flowing into?
Yeah, it's kind of a flat. It's, yeah, it's not really, there's one basin there and it's not really, it should be pitched where you take some of the water off, like she flows some of it off and then bring some of it to the catch base. And it's kind of, it puddles in certain spots.
You mentioned trucks turning there when they're not supposed to, has been eating that up and doing some damage. Do we feel confident that we can address that moving forward, or is this?
I mean, that's something I, I know without locking that gate, I mean, then that creates a huge other issue. You know, bus driver doesn't have it. We don't have, you know, in the middle of the night, we need to go in there. So I mean, it's one of those things that it's, I don't think it'll ever stop, but even during the day, unless any, every bus goes out and shuts the gate.
Yeah, I mean, just as a long-term, if it's shortening replacement cost life, if it's, you know, creating ongoing maintenance after a fresh replacement, it's a procedural thing to town that, I don't know, requires a larger discussion, even if there is a need for the pavement.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably a thousand feet from a truck stop. So they go past it and they look and there's, I mean, they've kicked plenty of people out of there, but fortunately, it happens. Control it, but.
Is there a camera there, Troy?
To be honest with you on that, sure, I don't, I don't know. Maybe through, maybe the bus company has it. I can look into that.
Okay.
I don't, on our end, no, there's not, you know.
Because I'm just thinking with, you know, two, two truck stops up and running, it's probably going to be aggravated because it is sort of the, oh, I made a boo-boo, the only stop gap. You can't turn around on 320 otherwise, really.
Yeah.
So, so maybe that there's some negotiation in place that could happen. Although it does seem like a stretch, but first you'd have to sort of capture the, the instances. Or at least some data.
Okay, the only thing you can do is put a power gate in there and give everybody encoded remote or whatever. Well, it's probably less than paving. It would still be another considerable cost to put in.
Yeah, expensive.
Sounds like a CIP project to me.
Sounds like fancy. But replacing those, they've been all the time. I mean, I don't remember when the last time was. I kind of remember. It was in the last 15 years, I'm sure, because I remember it.
Yeah.
Before that, I think it was the.
The Millings?
The Millings, yeah. So, yeah, they might not have a good base under it.
No, probably mostly from now.
I'm not anticipating any reconfiguration of, we're in need for any reconfiguration of storm work, like drainage.
No, I mean, the drainage is there. I mean, we can kind of pitch it in, yeah.
Good.
Okay, what's the next one?
This is the salt shed. So the price there, I mean, I put a million dollars for it. I mean, with the excavation, I've gone back and forth with Carl to see if we can shrink it down to move it. The biggest problem is where he has it placed, the amount of material that needs to be removed to make it a level site there. So that's where most of the cost comes from. The building has gone up in price. The last time it was priced was 200,000 just for the canopy. And it's probably around 300,000 now for the canopy. So that was, it's one of those things where there, we get some funding for it or grants or something. But either that or we keep it the same size where it is, or we add on to the one that we have and knock that one down and put it there. But I know with the state and stuff, building a new project, they, they're concerned with where that water goes from that shed, so.
You have half-inch wide cracks in something that contains salt?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and how much salt do you lose in that process?
I mean, it's not that. I mean, it's, there's all, you know, it's cracking, you know, up and down everywhere. And it's just, it's, salt, salt with concrete isn't the greatest thing.
It's water again, man?
No, no.
I just know what salt does in my lab. Corrodes everything, yeah.
I know this has been around. Sorry, I'm going to be 20 questions this new guy today, Troy, but what do you have, what's the vision for the?
A new one's 100 by 100.
And just a?
And just basically it have like six-foot walls or eight-foot walls and then like a vinyl canopy. It's not a wooden structure. It's like a, you know, it's like a big greenhouse type. The three walls and the whole farm will be over. But, and they were going to divide it to have like the sand and salt and the salt mix. We're running almost pure salt now, so trying to get away from the sand.
And what are the three walls made of?
Concrete.
You don't have any coating you can put on them?
Yeah, they would put like a rubber membrane on it and they would do it.
Sorry, the chemist in me.
Did he status update about the steep funding that we're trying to get for a couple of years now?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. Did you find out anything, Pete?
I have not heard anything about steep yet. That's, that's on the list.
Yeah, there should be like 350,000 for this.
Okay, I'm gonna be stupid. What is steep?
No, Small Town Economic Assistance Program.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a rolling, not rolling. It's a state grant program that is not every year. And it's not on the same schedule all the time. And it's not guaranteed at all. It's competitive. But we, we got one for Turnpike Road years ago. And we had money left over and then asked if we could reallocate it towards the salt shed. And they tentatively said yes, but because the money was, came in through the DOT and that this would come through a different department, it was got held up. And then I don't know what happened to it.
They haven't said no, but they haven't said yes.
Right. Does anybody even in the state know where this paperwork is? It's going from one department to the other.
So OPM?
Yeah, OPM is where.
And they have reallocated funds to pass. I believe when we did Polster Road, there was money left over. And we used that to do the Dealville School Road Bridge. So the precedent is, isn't just us, but they have done it in the past for us of reallocating, you know, unused funds.
And we have it in writing that they said okay. Like, I know before I left, that was one of the things, we had a piece of paper.
Do you know the date on that about, I mean?
Well, I left November 2017.
Yeah.
So.
Do we have a procedural, like, so I know this sits and it is, but is there a procedural path forward to advance that, you know, effort or give direction that this is a subject to Troy so that it's not?
Yeah, Pete has to call.
Yeah, typical assignment, apply for the grants.
Administrative, another administrative.
Well, and the thing is, I don't know that we've gotten any other steep grants since then.
I don't know.
The Old Town Hall Septic System, I believe, is under steep.
Yeah.
We still waiting for the money for that one?
Uh, we have the money for that one, don't we? And we're, we've got that project starting in like two months.
Okay, okay. Yeah, well, yeah, it was going out there. Carl was getting it ready to put out for an RFP to add it, you know, down the road this spring.
But they're like grant, you, you apply for the money through grant, the grant process, right?
Right.
So is there a statute of limitations kind of?
I, I don't know. That's, that's the thing. I know Erica had followed up on it a couple of times. But it, it takes getting our state senator involved because Tony Guclamo was involved the first time in saying it was okay.
So this is money they allocated, but you haven't actually gotten.
Right, right. So they, it's one of those things where they're like, hey, congratulations, you have $500,000. But you have to get reimbursed for it. So, so we did for Turnpike Road and we still had money left over. And we said, oh, there's some money. Can we use it for this other thing? And they said, yeah. Go ahead. Except it wasn't like, it was, it's like, yeah, we'll get you the paper. It was like that. So we know, we know if we spend the money, there, there's, we don't know who, who it would be that would actually send the money now, right?
You know.
It's not, like Donna needs to know, like.
Yeah, well, that's what I asked earlier. Does anybody in the state actually know where the money is?
Yeah.
Well, somebody knows, they're just not telling you.
Well, the question I have is originally, I'm sure the 350K went a lot further to completing this project.
Yeah, they're not going to give us more.
They're not going to give us more, okay. So it's really only a third of the cost.
Yeah.
So is this project getting done without a steep grant? You know, is?
Yeah.
And it's listed, I ask, because it's listed as a year one need, right? So is there the ability to get that, you know, like if it's approved or, you know, we're approving a million dollars without any confidence of anything actually happening, so.
Right.
I think it's, it's critical.
Yeah, and even if they gave a full amount, well, so I, so Pete, I don't know if you have ideas for other steep grants, but let's say that they say, oh yeah, here's your 350. And then we say, oh yeah, can we ask him another 500 in this round? That's still not a million dollars.
Right.
So we have to come up with a rest. Yeah, and there's no guarantee that they would say yes anyway. Or that there isn't something that we need the money for more. So definitely we have to pay for some of it.
I'm just wondering about our storm experience in the West, say five years, maybe three years.
These last storms, I mean, they hold 200 tons of salt in that bin. In the last couple of storms, the way they, these 20-hour storms that last will use the 200 tons. So I mean, it's a, we have a delivery service that brings the salt like a phone call away in the bringing of the next day. But it's still, if something was ever to happen, or if there was ever a salt shortage, and it's happened.
It's happened.
We, you know, where we would be in trouble.
I think it happened once and it was a statewide shortage of salt.
Yeah, I remember that. I was on CIP then too, yeah.
So it's happened once.
Right. Well, was it the, the October storm or not?
There were a couple of years that were a blur, but it was, it was around that timeframe.
Yeah.
And that, and that's what happened. And then the bigger towns who have big salt sheds buy all of their salt in the beginning of the season. So they were fine because they had already bought all their salt. They had a big giant pile. But we were waiting on our weekly deliveries and had to, I don't even know how it got.
We begged, borrowed and sold, right?
Yeah.
It was sort of a crisis.
They managed, but.
It was a crisis. And then, what I think is if we wanted to rebuild that salt shed, I don't, from what I understand, we can't, we couldn't build the same size one in that spot because of all the code changes.
Code, yes, exactly.
So, and I, even the size of it, I think there's like some, probably a state regulation that needs to be a certain, like, I think they want you to be able to keep everything undercover. They don't like that our sand is out of it because the sand erodes. And there's like all these rules about it. You're supposed to.
The runoff and stuff.
Yeah, you're supposed to keep a tarp over it. And that's why all the towns, like they're, you can get bigger sheds so they can put the sand into. So.
So procedurally, I mean, it's, it's more convenient, you know, in an emergency area. But is there, is getting bolt orders, is there operational savings, you know?
There is, yeah, I mean, like, look at last year. Last year was a mild winter, so we, I mean, we used the money to actually pave Polster Road. But I mean, if there was that where you could buy that, you'd be an advanced way ahead, you know, with that money.
Is your annual contract based on a state contract and it's a cost, it's a cost per ton?
It's per ton, yeah.
So there's no savings if you bought a little bit or a lot?
There would, yeah, I mean, no.
Per ton.
Per ton, I mean, that's not, if they could deliver it all at once, there probably would be a cost savings. We buy it by the load. So how, you know, we're buying about a ton, but it's still like, we only can have so much. Where if I was guaranteed to bring me, you know, 2,000 tons in July, somebody would probably bring it cheaper in July than they would bring it right now because it's in demand for everywhere. So that's, there would be a cost savings, I mean, would be huge, but there would be a cost savings.
This, to Jim's?
No, no, but I mean.
To Jim's point though, could we, could we put, could we get, capture, you know, as he put it, quantify?
Still get the same presentation.
A savings like by looking at what they were charging per ton, like say in September or July?
Yeah, there's, right, but yeah.
And see, I mean, I don't know. I just think it'd be a way to do it, the simplest way to do it, not a, not a 10-year average necessarily, but.
There is a.
I mean, what, your budget, what, it's like 60 grand or something like that for a yearly sale?
140.
It was 140?
Yeah.
I bet. Still, so it's something, there's some savings there, but it's not to his point.
In some years, that's not enough.
Yeah.
I mean, we went, what, two years ago, it was like 170,000? That's, the price isn't going down, it's going up, everything, it's.
Nothing goes there.
Yeah.
And so, so you have it in year one because?
Just the, due to the, I mean, it's been there. I put it there just to make you guys aware, again, that it's, it needs to happen. It's, doesn't have to happen today, but it's something that, you know, it's coming because, you know, the state ever really stepped in or whatnot. And there is a broke that runs in the back there, you know.
And, and this date, it's been submitted like every year since 2015?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. How much deterioration has been on the shed in nine years? A lot, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's in need of like a roof. The siding is, there's, you know, we keep patching it together, but it's, you know.
Well, speaking about the environmental impact, is there inland wetlands concern? Or, you know, runoff concerns into that broken? If so, to what degree have we been notified of a?
We have been notified, but we do our sampling for where the water, because we have separators right there before it goes into the retention ponds. So, but we take water samples with it. But we try to not make as much runoff, but it happens. Trying to keep as much as we can inside and then, so it's not, you know, nobody's come after us yet, but eventually, something will happen, yeah.
Well, we, but we've just recently more, become more salt reliant versus sand-salt mix, right?
Same amount of salts in there. It's not, if it's 200 ton in there, every time it's still sitting there, it's not. I mean, you're using it, but it's coming out as fast as you're using it. It's not sitting there.
Yeah, but Troy, we have, we have, we're, we're using more salt now to clear the ice than we, than we were two, three years ago. We were using more of a 50/50 mix a few years ago. Now we're using, what would you say?
We're using almost pure salt now.
Almost pure salt. So that's definitely of a concern and, well, it's still.
The same amount of material going down or is it the same amount of salt?
It's, it's the same amount of salt. There's 200 ton in that bin at all times, whether you're running a 50/50 mix or not.
Yeah.
The sand, the salt was there. There's two bins there. One's a salt-sand mix and one's the salt.
But the state of the salt shed isn't aggravating how much runoff there is, is my question.
Well, I'm sure it's getting worse and worse every year. I mean, it's not in the building, so I mean, yeah, there is, you know, that water does get in there, it's going to leak.
How old is that building?
Probably as old as the garage. As of the.
Could be what, 45 years?
Probably, yeah, but yeah, 30, 35, something like that. Yeah, well, because Lou, well, Lou's been here for 35 and he was here when he first started, so it's got to be less than 30 prime years.
Have any repair costs for that thing in your budget at all? Just, I have, I have the answer, I just wanted to ask.
Not to repair it, you know, put in a roof, new sides.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah.
Um, the next one, Schofield Road. That, you know, we've got a couple of different things. Beta Group who did asphalt engineering there is doing a scope of workforce. They still haven't completed that. They said it would be completed within the next month or so. It was just like, ah, basically to tell you what the engineering costs would be and then the whole project. So that's been on the list for quite some time now. The roof is starting to, if you go up it, coming from 32, it's starting to get like rippled. It's, it's showing its, its age.
All right, let's be, better for dark sky.
The, this one, oh, I'm sorry, it says planning, engineering and inspection for 2.2 million. Does that exclude construction costs?
No, that's the construction, but that's a whole package thing. It's about 2.
Okay, it says planning, engineering and inspection, doesn't say construction on the bottom there.
Oh, that's, that's my mistake. So that'd be the project, yeah.
But you, you don't have a defined script of work in beta, so you don't have the hard ass.
Hard ass, and when data came out to do the scope of work, you know, he gave us that between two to two and a half million to do the whole project, you know, even with the engineering costs. That was his whole, like the whole project would be done with that.
And that number was what year? When did he give it to you?
Uh, he gave it to, well, last fall he gave it, that.
And it was first submitted in 1990?
Yeah. And there's water that runs in the back of people's houses that we go and clean up the trench, you know.
It's a third of a mile. I mean, that's like seven properties, if you look at it, because I did. Is it? It, it seems. I'm sure the need is there. It just seems like a lot for what is essentially a third mile stretch.
It's a whole, it's the hill, the entire hill.
About a third mile, it's just close to the extent.
It's not even all the way to Village Hill. It's not, it was just literally to the top of the hill.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a question about that too. Is that, is that, does it contribute to the overall persistent icing down the hill in a storm, in a freeze storm?
Yeah, you mean like a runoff or like the rain?
Yeah, I mean, like I know, I have friends who live on Schofield and they have to frequently, or occasionally anyway, bunk with friends in other flattered parts of town because they just can't get home. They can't get up the hill.
I mean, during the ice, I mean, I don't know, the roads always plowed. I mean, I haven't had any complaints that nobody's got to their house.
So it's not that.
I mean, no, it's not that, no.
It's, but there's, there definitely are rivers that run through people's yards and stuff, yeah. So is there any reason why it's 2.5 million up top and 2.3 at the bottom?
I think that was what we did in overall, but there was about, he said about $200,000 were the engineering costs. So the overall price was about two and a half million, the project completed. So the two and a half, no, without, without the engineering, like if we put the 300 or 200,000 to the engineering cost and then the project, is the whole overall project is two and a half million. That's what he gave us as a estimate for us.
Okay, so it's, so when it says 2.2 at the bottom and it says engineering?
Yeah, that's, well, that's what with that, so, all right, so some of this may, this is my fault in how these forms were. So maybe I wasn't just, you know, there has to be an engineering cost and then it would go out to a bid process. So he has the engineer for beta and said, you're looking at a two and a half million dollar project, all said and done, with engineering, pavement, blacked out, the whole, everything done. That's what he gave the price. So it wasn't broken down to be like, it's going to be, you know, 100,000 a year, 100,000 a year. He's giving you a rough estimate of the, the project will be here.
The base figure should be 2.5 in both places, so.
Troy, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is, there's the Schofield Road and is there another road that's got big problems?
Liska.
Liska.
And that's, that's, I believe in here.
Next.
All right, and Village Hill.
And Village.
Village Hills is the one I was thinking.
Those are the three good ones.
And Village Hill, has it got bigger problems or less problems?
No, Village Hill just needs some bases on it. And if it was repaved and the water, you've got to keep the water from those properties that are coming out to the road.
So, so Schofield is, is, is the biggest, worst project?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the next one?
Yeah, next one.
All right, uh, which one was this? Oh, the lower was the next one. Or yeah, by 22-8?
Yep.
So this is a?
I was going to ask you to talk about the other road.
Okay, no, we'll go to the other road, so let's do that.
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
All right, so Liska Road then. So this is the bridge culverts there. Basically, it's washed out twice in my time getting here. It's the culverts, it needs to be, there's three, five, four, or six foot pipes there now. Carl would like to put a max culvert in there so the water flows better, there's less damage. I've seen it the last two rainstorms or three rainstorms, right before we had all the snow, the water was about a foot below the road. And it didn't end up going over, but it was, it was ready to peak. If it would have kept raining, we were going to double again.
Yeah, or some trees got stuck.
Yeah, we actually cut some trees when the water went down. We actually cut some trees out of the pipe there that was jammed up against it, so. And there's all, that's a dead end road. There's really no access. There is a road, from my understanding, in the back through someone's property, but it's not like we can drive it today. It would have to be some work that wants to get washed out.
Yeah, that has been used before when you did the catch the stroke bridge. For, like, catch this road people out if all that bridge was out, so it is possible, but it's a, yeah, concrete dirt road. I'm sure it needs some attention.
Is the, is the value, it's a million?
It's about a million, yeah.
Uh, spreadsheet has 535 and up.
Oh.
That was last year's.
That's a point of reference, so that. That's a point of reference, um, so that increases year one.
Yes.
Um, and then, so to Pete's, kind of just playing off of Pete's earlier question, uh, the priority need. I mean, if this, if this is an access or help, you know, safety concern, for this culvert and access to people, you know, accessing the homes on the other side of Liska, is that? I, I mean, as much as I know how much it sucks to get water in a basement, you know, it's not, that isn't necessarily a potential safety concern to the residents. Uh, maybe it is, I, you know, I don't know to any extent, but I, you know, I don't understand.
If it washed out, the house caught on fire, somebody was dying of a heart attack, there's no way to get an ambulance there. There's no way somebody's house would burn down, you know what I mean? That's, so it, it is a safety issue to a point.
I, I mean, I guess, and that's the question, is it, you know, if, from a priority standpoint, is the safety need for residents on that end of the thing, uh, a higher priority?
Is Liska Road more important than Schofield?
Yeah.
It's, it's a, that's a, I mean, it's, it is, it's a toss. I would say, the way the weather's changing, sure, yeah, absolutely. I mean, Schofield, the water's flowing down, yeah, it goes back to people's properties and does that. If you lose a bridge, what are you gonna do? You just can't magically get a bridge, can't go to the bridge store and just put one there. I mean, it's, you know, it's.
Mansville supply.
That's, yeah, I mean, so, yeah, and it's, I would say it is a priority. It's, hopefully it doesn't happen, but.
Is there any state or federal funding available to help construct the bridge?
I'm sure there's something out there, some grants or.
I only know when I read the paper, and there's one town adjacent to us, I forget which one, they did three bridges in one year with mostly state funding, which I think came from the feds anyways.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of money, as I recall the discussion with Ketchis Road, the option was to, federal money was available, but it doubled the price of the bridge because you had to follow the federal standards. Um, so, that resulted with the town paying that.
And then we were in trouble with, uh, uh, what was that bridge in north of this?
I catch this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that we were able to do it for like a quarter of the price.
Yeah, it was definitely less than, than half.
Yeah.
We, and that's what we did. It's also faster.
Yeah.
As I recall.
Yeah, by like, every four times.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the standards you have to build to are so much higher. Um.
I, I think the net out, out of pocket would have been approximately the same either way, but you said you had to go through the federal hoops and.
Yeah.
Uh, perhaps you get a better bridge out of the deal, but took it three years longer to get it done.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I read the paper, other towns are getting money, and not significant bridges, they're smaller bridges that they're playing with, but uh, they're getting like eighty-five percent funding for those.
So this is one that's been around for a while, right? Have we, do we know what the due diligence is on grant? You know, like what the opportunities are? Has anybody done that, like, work to figure out what needs to happen?
No, I haven't, no.
So it says here, you will seek FEMA funding, which I haven't actually looked at.
No, cause, well, if it was washed, FEMA would step in, somebody would be helping with that, but, I mean, FEMA's hard to work with, then.
There is some funding occasionally available under the Hazard Mitigation Grant, that when there's, let's say the big hurricane comes through and there's a hundred million dollars of damage, they take ten percent of that and put it into a fund to prevent future damage. Um, they don't do maintenance, so if you had a, like, a rusted out corrugated culvert, they won't do that, that's simply a maintenance issue. But if you had an undersized bridge, that they could potentially pay for that, the turnpike road extension on that washed out in oh-five, the hazard mitigation funding paid for a good portion of that, um, to do that, but it's a, it's subject to availability of funds, and it's subject to having enough statewide emergencies where they got federal money and they were able to set aside some for these, uh, hazard mitigation. Through CROG, uh, recently, we see the Wincog, but now it's CROG doing it. Uh, they do a hazard mitigation plan for us every five years as required by FEMA, which keeps your eligibility that if funding does become available, um, you can go after that. Um, so that's one of the potential places you can sometimes get funding from.
Okay.
Like any other grant program, especially at the state, federal level, there is a whole lot of paperwork to go along with it.
Somebody like Beta, are they working out plans? Or, like, working out for, or there's six thousand in here for?
Yeah, no, the, uh, the town engineer has a whole set of engineered plans with that, uh, that's, he's been worked on.
Okay, so we have, like, so the plan is in place?
The plan is in place, yes, yeah.
So there's six thousand dollars for planning, engineering and inspection is?
That's what, he, basically, that's what helped, helped finalize everything, which, for the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
In, in the longer term picture, in the past, most of that water is coming out of the Fenton Ruby property, and coming down in ninety or ninety-one, they replaced the, uh, bridge by Burma Road and made it a lot bigger. So they've upgraded the upstream bridge many years ago. Ketchis Road is downstream from that, they did that eight years ago or something like that, and this is the bridge that's stuck in the middle. It hasn't been upgraded for the flows.
That was two thousand nine.
Yeah, okay, time flies.
Yeah, it does.
What was two thousand?
Ketchus Road, cause it was right when I got elected, this is, I had to sign the papers and started it right then. So, yeah, it could have been twenty-ten?
No, the last couple of storms, I've watched the Ketchis Road Bridge, water is bypassing that bridge and going over the road. So the grand scheme of things, that one might not be as big as perhaps you want.
Mm-hmm.
That is as well, because the one that's stuck in the middle there, and it's got that isolated, about fifteen houses up there.
Dead end, right?
Um, I mean, for the most part, yes. There is a right away in the back door, I believe, is only the Ketchis Road Bridge, but.
So, not to, uh, honor it again, but I, I'm just trying, trying to figure out where you're at with this, cause, you know, the project benefit says, by performing an assessment, we'll know exactly what condition the culvert is in, which leads, I believe, like, we haven't gotten there yet?
No, no, Carl's, yeah, I mean, the assessment, it's there, I mean, it's not, you know, it's, like.
So we have an assessment, I guess what I'm saying is we don't have, like, an implementation plan, we don't have a set of, we don't have somebody like Beta doing a set of documents to instigate that. So is there an engineering component of this that's gonna need to happen once this assessment is performed, before they complete the work?
Uh, the town engineer has, has a full set of engineered plans to replace that. He's done the calculations for water flow, all that, to where it is.
Okay.
That's been done.
So then we're good.
Steve, can you talk at all about, um, uh, times where that, where that bridge was compromised or that access was compromised? And you did have an ambulance call there? Uh, is there anything, you know, that, cause it's sites that.
The one that we had a year or two ago, I think was the highest, the water went over that, and it was only about six inches on the deck, at least at the point I saw it. So, and we did not have any calls out there during that time period. Um, I'd be more concerned underneath the bridge for that amount of water going through and running up the banks of, you know, scour and undermining the foundation and that sort of thing. Uh, in the long run, that's not gonna help it any. So we, we haven't had any calls where we had to go get a boat to go over there or anything like that.
Is, is, is that what the plan is?
Uh, no, because of that, that's, that are, like, through the woods from Moose Mountain Campsite, that perhaps get the forest truck in, uh, and run through there, and, uh, that road hasn't been cleared lately, you probably need a chainsaw your way in. Uh, so it's, it's an isolated neighborhood, has the bridge at the beginning of it. Um, that's old and can't carry the water capacity, it's been coming down, uh, you know, the last five years or more. It isn't just one instance, we've had water up and over the bridges, it's been more than one. Uh, you fix the bridge upstream from it, now you get the water coming down at a certain rate, and it's over top of the bridge. Example being Paul's, the road got overflowed in, uh, oh-five, and the water going around the bridge made a sinkhole big enough to drop a car into, and not just a little bit, it nosedive, stuck it, dove into the hole because of the water going around the bridge, so.
Like the beginning of our Cadillac farm structure, you know?
Yeah. Yep, so, uh, so, you know, bad things can happen, uh, when water starts going over and around bridges, it starts to wash out things, and you don't wanna drop a car into it, uh, or have it collapse when you drive, you know, something over it, so, so maybe it's an issue, certainly.
Okay, any more questions about that one? Okay, so we, we haven't talked about Schofield.
No, Schofield.
Oh, and Village?
Yeah. So Village Hill, this year we lost out on a grant, uh, to a neighboring town to have that done. Um, there's sixteen catch bases, it's been fully engineered, set of plans, everything. Uh, the town was, the town who was kinda supposed to, there is some money that was, I believe, in somewhere, some line item, that, you know, we were supposed to do is set here and then keep going up the hill and periodically through the years.
Mm-hmm.
It still can happen that way. It was just, last summer was kind of a, an oddball summer with staffing issues and stuff, so. But there is a set of plans, and we're still gonna work on it. When Carl did the whole set and Beta came in and gave us, when we worked with Mike Damato on this, the five hundred thousand was actually to do the whole project, and the paving all the way from the bridge to Pine Crest, um, that was the total cost, was five hundred thousand, so, by having that contractor down.
Last year.
Last year.
I noticed this was labeled phase one. How many other phases are pending?
No, there was, so there was fees, and then the fees was from Pine Crest up, was like paving all the way up through. That's where it was. That was just, that's, that's coming, will come out of another bunch of, that's not a CIP project. That's pavement.
Okay. Um, I gotta, I guess the loader's next?
Yeah, the loader. That's a new one, um, for two thousand and six, I believe, so in two thousand twenty-six, it'll be twenty years old. Um, usually typically, most towns replace it. Uh, this year, we put quite a bit of work into it, um. Like I said, it gets used all the time. It's, the guys use it, they use it today, use the loader trucks, um, it is a vital piece of equipment for our department.
I'll lose it, sorry.
It'll be, it's eighteen years old.
What are your repair costs fabricating for that?
Well, this year we put about thirty-five thousand dollars into it. Um, the center pins were bad, they replaced the center pins, there's some grease lines, all the injectors, they pretty much went through the whole entire motor. Um, there was many grease leaks. So they went through it, basically did a huge service on it. Um, could it be pushed out a year? Probably, yeah. I mean, it's running better than what it has, but it's something that is a, you know, a vital piece of equipment that it should be, definitely stick to that schedule with the twenty years or twenty-one years.
What did you say the, um, maintenance was?
Was about thirty-five thousand we put into it this year. And that's not every year, I mean, we do our oil changes and stuff. This year it was the center pins, it had, it was, we couldn't do it, John Deere had, came and took it.
You say we pushed it out a year, that's from the twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yeah.
Not from the script, it's already pushed out of here.
Yeah, it already is.
And then a dump truck?
Yep, and then this would be the last of the dump trucks. So this one would be Jeff's truck, um, in twenty-five, twenty-six. So that would be, uh, to replace his truck, his truck will be ten years old. So if we kept it on a ten year cycle, we would take that truck and put it as a spare truck, and then the new truck. And then it would be quite some time before another new big dump truck would be purchased.
So that's what's confusing me, because I thought five trucks or more? Okay, maybe four. So, and they're, they last ten years, and we wanted to be on a schedule that was not all bunched together. It just, but we're only in by one in this five-year period, that doesn't.
Well, that's cause we bought, the last three years, we bought all the trucks because they never were on that ten-year cycle.
Right, but they'll never be again.
They'll never, well, no, unfortunately, because you bought them all within a couple of years.
Yeah, which is what I was trying to avoid.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's why I said that. Um, so now, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I feel like we should put one more truck in, in like the last year or something, because saying we're gonna buy three trucks and like fiscal year twenty-nine, thirty, is not a good plan. I don't know.
I believe a few years ago, you had a document that showed all the trucks and how old they were and when you bought them and.
Christine, yeah, 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 and then he had, he had sent me a document, but I couldn't access it and didn't realize it, so he told me about.
I don't know if you could share with that with us, so we get a better understanding of how old the fleet is and.
Right.
You know, can you tweak it a little bit and get, you know, eleven or twelve out of one truck?
And you very well could, but you're still gonna be in that scene, you know, you're pushing it out, so it's, once again, there, it's, everything was bought within the three years, so even if you go two years, now you're pushing that, it's still, you're still within that few years of buying a truck. It's not, it will never be like a ten-year, you buy one every ten years, it's never gonna happen, or one every five years. It's still within.
Well, it seems like we should buy one every two to three years.
That's what I was thinking.
That's why I'm saying we should have another truck on this plan.
But when I'll take another one, I'll take.
Yeah, so. How old would the oldest big truck be?
Well, right now, we still.
In year five.
So year five, well, let's see. So there's a two thousand fifteen Freightliner, two thousand twenty-four, and the two thousand twenty-two Freightliner. And there's Red's truck, the two thousand twenty, that was bought when the contractor wasn't pulling for us, so.
So they'd be under ten years old if we threw another truck in year five?
Yes. Twenty-four.
Also, we talked at some point, you know, not this time of year, but try to do something longer than five years.
Right, and that, that's what.
For these major things and, again, try to spread them out or.
Yeah, that's what it was when it was, that's kind of what it looks like.
Yeah.
So it was, even with all the equipment where it was and what it is, on this, you know, the year cycle, where a year would be, so.
Do you have that?
No, I can't get, I can't access it because it's in a shared doc that I don't have access to. And I didn't realize, cause it didn't come as a, an attachment, it came as a link, so I didn't, I didn't see it, so I'm sorry.
No, I'll, I'll tell her tomorrow, maybe she can resend it as an email, whatever it was.
Okay.
Share it with you.
Yeah.
So, looking at those dates again, the twenty fifteen is the one that you wanna replace now, but you said that there was one in twenty, uh, twenty twenty? Which means in year five, that would be pushing a ten-year?
Uh, yeah, right now. So two thousand thirty would be when it would be replaced.
Right, and what's our, what's our year five, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty?
No, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, close, the next year though.
Yeah, it, it would be close.
Yeah.
So it might be reasonable to put another one in year five.
Mm-hmm. Or push this one out, knowing that in two or three years, there's gonna be another one. And then some, some one or two of those would be pushed out, but, I mean, that's a long time from now.
Are all those trucks under lease?
The plan.
I believe, no, the only one, the twenty twenty Freightliner, I believe, was paid for, wasn't it, Donna?
So the year again?
The twenty twenty.
The twenty twenty is, uh, is, is not on lease.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that was paid for. Yep. And the rest of them aren't.
And there's no other big equipment purchases, I, I think, thank you.
No, no, everything is out, um, the mowers, those are all out. Um, the only other one would be, that's not on CIP, would be the service truck, at ten years old to replace that, that'd be two thousand twenty-eight, would be a ten-year-old for the service, but that's just a pickup truck, that's not a big dump truck.
Yeah.
But was part of this, you know, part of the purchase plan sort of sped up because of ARPA? Did you have anything that you?
Uh, no, the, the only thing that was purchased from Harper was the skid steer, and that was, when that was purchased, it wasn't even on, like, a CIP thing, we would just keep it in that. Whatever, and how many years from now wasn't to be put on CIP?
Um, I just wanted to ask if the, if the, uh, truck in the, in this, that we're talking about now is comparable to the twenty twenty-two one dump?
Yeah, it's the same, yeah.
Same truck?
Same truck.
So it's, it's almost doubled in price? In three years or two years?
He said three hundred thousand, yeah, yep. He said three hundred thousand, yeah, yep.
Whoa. There's one sixty then.
The new truck that we just took delivery was two sixty-five, what, last week? That we just took. Figure two years.
Someone's making out like abandoned.
Alright. Anything else? That's all of it, right? Any other questions for Troy? Thanks, Troy.
Alright, well, thank you.
The selectmen are on the budget?
The selectmen are on the budget. These are both the projects that were out in year two last year, so now they're in year one this year. The first one's the flooring for this room, the hallway and the safe. I believe the safe has to be done because it doesn't meet requirements. I believe there's carpeting in there now and that. Due to moisture retention, et cetera, et cetera, they can't have carpet in there. So that's gotta come up to standards. The flooring in here has been peeling up. Occasionally, an employee just brings me a tile from this room and says, I tripped on it. So it needs to be done. However, we're going to have to do some construction in here for both privacy of the. Food share and, uh, storage for the registrars. The registrars are under a huge pressure right now. Unfunded state mandate. I, I, I know that's a favorite term. Early voting is going to extend out two weeks before. So there's gonna be a huge cost increase, including equipment. Increase. So they're gonna, Troy and I have already started discussing how to build them additional storage here. And not have it interfere with the light and HVAC systems in this room. So, um, if, if the flooring. Flooring needs to be done. If it's, it's pushed out to year two, it probably wouldn't kill us with the other projects and getting them. Sequenced. But it, it, it does need to be done.
And thirty-five thousand is the right number?
I have no idea. I will check on that. That's, that's the number I inherited.
Yeah.
That doesn't include the construction then?
That doesn't include the construction. So if we put down new floors and then construct over the top of it, probably doesn't seem ideal. So I think we should probably construct and then do floors. I think Troy agrees with me.
I just, a single classroom for ninety-five hundred dollars, about four hundred square feet. Yeah, I'm looking at current pricing.
The problem is that they had to put down all these stickers for COVID and they tried to pull them up and when they pulled up the stickers, the floor came up with them. So we're stuck with stickers and other stuff on this floor until we do it.
Can I just ask you a question? So we're, we're not doing the floors or we're not?
We're, we have to do the floors. It's, it's just that if they're pushed out to year two, they, you, you, it wouldn't be unreasonable.
So are you gonna then submit for the construction in here or?
Uh, I believe we can get the construction in here under operating costs. It's, it doesn't, you, CIP comes in at what, ten Ks when you start? And then the, the cost of the construction is less than ten K. Hopefully. That's our best guess to make at this point.
And then the next one was?
The next one is, uh, building security. What we'd like to do is, this is also, I believe, a year two thing that's now in year one. Moving from a key system to a electronic fob system for security in this building. The building's used by a whole host of people, all of whom need access. And, uh, this would allow us to issue fobs instead of keys. So that if, if somebody has access and they no longer need access. Or we need to, instead of doing inventory on keys, we can just turn the fob off. It will also allow us to do a number of other things like open doors and keep them open only for a set amount of time. We, we could monitor who's going in and out of the building at different times. It's got a lot of advantages. And that way we can get rid of that two and a half gallon bucket of unknown keys in Shannon's office.
And.
Right now, every one of the exterior doors of this building uses a different key. So that's a project I'd like to move forward on. I, I believe thirty-five thousand's a good price. I. Started talking to two contractors. I haven't gotten estimates from either one of them yet. I'll, I'll do that as soon as I can.
And that's, that's it? And the next five years, that's all you wanna do?
Right now, I, I will come up with something soon. I. I, I haven't had a lot of time to sit around and think of a wish list. I've been.
I know.
Gathering beneath me, so I.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm joking because.
Thank you.
Like, but that's, that's sort of one of our problems.
Yes.
When we have turnover, um, we forget about stuff. Or we're just don't think too far ahead. And, um, that's one of the reasons why we're underfunded on.
Ninety-two weeks to worry about.
Well, it's, it's also a problem, I think, that, uh, we, we talked about before, which is, it's a five-year plan. But the actual practice of doing this process focuses heavily on year one.
Right.
And diminishing returns on the other five, on the other four. So, um. That's, if there were some things already loaded in, then.
Right.
We, we'd at least have that notion of a, of a problem that, you know, a predecessor thought was, was important to have on the plan.
Yeah, like some of the things that have fallen off of here are, there's nothing for Old Town Hall. Um, we used to put some money into that every year, but we did a lot of projects there. But that then, it's gonna come back around. It's gonna need to get painted again. Probably gonna need some roof work. It's probably gonna need.
Already need to work on the front door, but I think Troy and I are gonna talk about that first.
I believe that sneak grant had painting in it.
Yeah.
That was with the septic. I believe there was something in the windows, I believe, was to be.
Oh, the letting, yeah, the glazing, yeah. No, that's good.
So I think that, I don't know if it was like everything painted, but I was, I believe there was something painted on that.
I, I also have a, uh. Inclined from the historic society and the town historian, that they've got storage in the back.
Yep.
I, I, they need, uh, uh, moisture control back there and maybe a new door. But I haven't even had a chance to go over there and look yet, so that's why I haven't submitted anything. Plus, I don't know whether it would rise to ten thousand dollars.
And then the, the other building is the senior center. Because that's, that's like the library. It's, it seems, it feels new, but it's starting to get to be like twenty years old. And we have, we have done stuff there. Um, and, and it's been different, different people in charge over there. Come in different years, asking for different things. But we have nothing on the horizon right now. That, that worries me.
Could you explain to me though, the senior center, isn't there some historic agreement that? The town would be responsible for liftoff and ongoing.
Well, that's button, that's button, you know, that's the housing.
That's different.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the town owns.
Owns the senior center.
Senior center.
Okay.
And, and the water system below it, which is a huge thing, if there's a problem with that.
We're getting water in. It's moving septic out that's an issue right now.
Yeah, the septic too.
Did you hear from them?
I haven't heard from them now, it's annoying.
And luckily, so, and Donna can tell you more about this, but there, the seniors' housing pays for their water and septic fees, right?
Yes.
And then a percentage of that goes into a capital fund to pay for future, um, repairs. So there is, there is presumably some money there.
Yes.
But when repairs are needed, they're gonna be really expensive, so.
There is another building that has not been on anybody's radar. It's currently uses the Boy Scout Hall.
Yes.
Next to the Old Town Hall.
Mm-hmm.
And that is in need of some maintenance as well.
Yep.
But nobody. Is coordinating that, we'll put it that way.
Yeah.
I, I, I found out that was a town building today. But that's, that's how soon I, recently I found out that we own that building.
Yep, it's a charming little spot. Good fires there.
Which building exactly is it?
It's a little, it's a little house on the green.
Right next to the Old Town Hall.
It's right next to it.
It's like a little shed, almost. But it's an actual building.
Yeah, and it's probably historic, right?
Yeah, probably.
Their furnace just went out.
Is the, is the, are, are the scouts like a permanent, or are they on a hiatus?
No, they're, they're using it. As a matter of fact, I think tonight, tomorrow night they're using this room because that, that building has got furnace issues.
Can I, so Pete, this, I mean, this is your buddy, I'm gonna ask a couple. Where do we stand on the, uh, DocCom?
The DocCom, I got a report the day before yesterday that it has failed our Department of Ag inspection. I have some questions on their. Their inspection. Uh, we just, the state just changed their requirements for animal farms. I got it. Also, at the same time I got the report, what we need to build there. Uh, the Department of Ag guy was guessing a hundred thousand dollars to fix it, bring it up to standards. Uh, Troy and I think we could probably do it for less than that. We have to go down there and look and see what the standards are and what we have right now. But it's, it's an item that's gonna be, uh, maybe. I'm meeting with Crog. Next week, uh, Crog is, is pushing regionalization of animal control, building officials and assessors. And I wanna start with animal control. As it stands right now, uh. Talon and, uh, Stafford have both expressed interest in regionalizing that. So after I figure out what the state of the law is and what we can do, then I'm gonna be meeting with those two town managers to see what we can do.
Are we also already kind of sharing with Talon?
Uh, no, we're kind of sharing with Stafford right now.
Okay.
We were sharing with Talon, now we're sharing with Stafford. Talon has two and a half animal control officers. Stafford, Wellington, Ashford and Eastburg share one.
I'd like to meet this half a person. I always wonder what a half a person looks like.
Well, she's, she's a half a person for animal control and half a person for the state police. So you make a whole person, isn't it?
I understand she's a whole person, it's just.
She's a whole person.
I just love it when they say a point five or. That's why I call it FTE, that's the way to.
Yeah.
The politically correct way, small time equivalent.
But there's a chance that's a, a, a budgetary savings. Thing, other than a capital improvement.
Yes.
Infrastructure.
Yes.
Potentially, so we're not there yet.
But.
No.
Keep it on the back of your minds for future. But then the other thing, Pete, just to kind of tag on to Christina's point, that we're losing long-term maintenance. I mean, I'm gonna beat a dead horse, but. For somebody's manager for the town.
I've heard you, yes.
I know, but somebody who is literally dedicated to processing and planning long-term maintenance needs. Um, you know, tracking and responsible for coordinating after that, it's, it's definitely a hole.
And helping you fill out your CIP request.
And helping everybody be able to fill out their CIP request. The library can take use of it, you know. I'm not trying to sink the library out, but, uh, you know, just, it would be very helpful. Um, knowing that there are many departments down there that just don't have. The experience or background to necessarily be on top of it or understand, you know. So, anyway.
Pete, while you're here, could I just ask, um, what the high points were of why we don't comply?
At the DocCom?
Yes.
The run, uh, dimensions and standards have changed. So we have areas where, I, from what I understand, we slide dog food under the fence. But those are no longer allowed because they often have their head stuck in it or something. They, you also now need concrete walls between the dogs, so in case one of them gets. Digestive problems, it doesn't pass to the next dog when they wash the floors. We also have to, uh, seal the floors so that they wash cleaner. And, uh, our gutters are broken and the roof leaks a little. And I, from what I understand, they may start requiring air conditioning for the dogs. So I, I haven't finished reading all the, the statistics yet. We're gonna have to check it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other than that, it's a great.
Plus, our, our DocCom's run by a, a volunteer, so we, you know.
Okay. Anything else about anything else? So I, I, thanks for coming, Phil, because I know it's, it's late. Um, and, and technically, we are gonna be talking about Board of Ed next week, right? Or is it two, in two weeks, two weeks? Next week is the fire department, but, um, but I wanted. You all to just see, get like the overall view of what all the requests are for the Board of Ed. For the next five years. And I tried to, basically downloaded the list. Um, and sorted it, and I sorted it by hall school and then center school and. By school. And the, the big numbers.
You mean the big numbers?
They're a good kind of mix.
Whoa, I'm just putting a page right up.
It's fine.
So, um. I can add to what Christina just said she did for you. There's a number in there, there's two numbers in there for ventilation. That were just like placeholders, so if she thinks the two hundred thousand dollar number is big, it's, uh, large enough.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
So this is the layout. Uh, I'm giving you two documents. Basically, one is the, the layout for. Um, one is the layout for both schools. And then the second document, we, Donna and I have been talking about this, trying to lay out a picture for you. Really for the priority for year one. In trying to help you understand the importance of projects that are aligned and need to be coordinated together. And so. Really the priority on that one-page document, it really paints the picture for what the Board of Ed is looking at. And the importance of, uh, making sure the funding is there. If the funding's not there. Um, the grants are, you can't fly one. Um, so. I'm not gonna walk through all your pro, all the projects tonight, but just looking at that one pager. The Board of Ed is requesting a minimum of one point five million dollars in project funds, similar to how you did the million. And there's a reason for that. So if you look at the priority projects and you go down, the, the roof replacement has the estimated project cost of eight fifty. For Center School, and after the cost, um, after the reimbursement rate, you're expected to be around three hundred and six thousand. The solar panels have to be done at the same time as the roofing project, if you're going to do that. Because it's the only time it is grant-eligible. If you don't do the solar panels, you have to wait twenty years until you do your roof again. The only other way you get solar panels is if you do ground-based solar panels, um, and that would be not grant reimbursable through the state. So it's not on the state list and basically DAS says, if you do a roof and you do solar, we will give you your reimbursement rate for the, for the whole project. Okay? So the solar could come off, but it's the only, you lose out on that for twenty years. The five hundred thousand dollars for solar is an estimate. We have, we, we didn't, haven't done a study. We haven't done any, uh, any, you know. Big items to figure out how many solar panels, what would the savings be? We haven't done any of that work because we don't wanna do the work if the funding's not gonna be there. The chimney, uh, repair and repointing is something that's gotta be in year one. Uh, right now the Board has funds approved through their non-lapsing fund. Um, to pay for, but what I'll tell you, they're gonna need every dollar of their non-lapsing fund to cover, especially in shortfall. That's, uh, in the three to four hundred thousand dollar range this budget year. Uh, we're on a budget freeze for Board of Ed currently. That eighty thousand dollars does not have any grant reimbursement, it's not eligible. And that is to repair and repoint that whole, the chimney that's there. That would be a July one project. Uh, the next two items, the H VAC owner's project manager and evaluation. We're going to be required through the state, we have to do an H VAC evaluation at both buildings, we're required to do it. We actually need much more than that, because to be able to do, figure out the engineering and what we need for the H VAC. Grant application, we have to do the study at both schools and figure out what is the approach. So that's kinda phase, what's in phase one, and I left the rest of the uh approach down the bottom, I'll talk to that, to those things in a second. If you get the grant, you get the reimbursement funds. If you don't get the grant, you're paying the full seventy five thousand for each. It's an estimate. The H M S roof is pretty um, a re- pretty reasonable number as far as like. Being close to where it should be, after reimbursement, you're at the four thirty-two, and again, the solar panels are the same thing. Half a million dollars is the ballpark. Only time you can do that. So before we even consider ventilation, you're at three point two million dollars in projects. And it would be one point two million to the taxpayer. You currently have a million dollars about. That sets, that you set aside last year, and they're really, the first priority is the roofs, but you have to do this in coordination with these other projects. Um. You know Q A and M right now is working on silly site for the Board of Education, so they'll be updating all our prices, anything really nears too out. We didn't spend all the time on getting prices because it's, you know, you're gonna pay for a price that's gonna be outdated. Kinda like Troy's truck, two years later is almost double, same concept, we're dealing with the same exact thing. Um, our reimbursement rate next year is sixty-three point ninety-three percent for eligible projects. Very, very few projects are eligible for reimbursement, the group that's on here. Is eligible. E- except for this chimney. All right, and that's, so it's important to know that each year, that pretty much declines annually, they take like a percentage point off almost every year. It just goes down. And then for me to apply for to the state for a grant. You have got to go through a town meeting, and you have to have all of your approvals on the town meeting. If you don't have approvals, I can't apply for the grant, and you have to have the funding. To get those town approvals, and what D A S has said is, in the past, if you remember, we had to do the the um, the town meeting for the roofs. Uh, and we had to do it twice because the price went up, they want you to do the full amount, even though you're not paying the full amount. You have to have the amount in your coffers for what your local share would be. All right, so that's important in that column, because when you start looking at all these projects. It's a lot of money you have to have in your coffers to do, put these together. The last piece before I get to the C S and H M S ventilation. We have to do this H VAC study and evaluation to determine what to do, you have to do that to be able to apply for the H VAC grant. The average grant, there were fifty in twenty twenty-two, there were fifty grants awarded, okay? The average cost for the grant, project cost, was two point one million dollars. Of the fifty grants that were awarded, they're listed on the bottom there, to give you a sense of. How big these projects are, how much they're gonna cost, it's not cheap. The ones that were in the zero to ten thousand, there were several that were like fourteen hundred dollars, they bought an air purifier. Why they applied for a grant for it is beyond me, I have no idea, um, but they did. The majority of these grants are a million dollars plus. I will tell you that Coventry granted a grant for sixteen million dollars to address one building. So, the number that was on as a placeholder of two hundred thousand dollars on Christina's sheet is just that, it's a placeholder. I put a bigger placeholder for you, I put a million and two million. Before reimbursement. What I'm gonna tell you is, that million and two million could be seven million and fourteen. Just for a track. I don't know that until we do the study and the evaluation. And the reason it could be so high is you've got a hundred-year-old building, you've got a seventy-year-old building, and they're trying to retrofit A C and heat into those buildings. It's a big, big project. Now, if we get that grant, it is sixty-three percent reimbursable. I believe they're saying that there's gonna be two, maybe one or two more rounds of that grant. I have to do that H VAC study to even be able to apply for the grant. You have to have the town meeting with the funding to support that. For, and and town meeting passed for me to apply for the grant. So when we talk about big dollars, and Donna and I were having a conversation about, if you just put a million dollars in. And I'm saying just like, it's not a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of these projects, it's not a lot of money. For what needs to happen. There's an H, there's H VAC legislation out there right now that is talking about temperature ranges, which we would fail a hundred percent in this room right now, cause it's freezing in here. Um, that has to be between sixty-eight degrees and seventy-eight degrees in the school, if you're not, you have to close. So with a school without A C, and our roof starts at seventy-nine degrees and warm on, as we get to warmer months and heat waves, we couldn't have school. So these things are things that are going to have to happen one way or the other, and if they don't. You're gonna just, people are just gonna hear my voice canceling school, and it's just, those, that's the legislation that's that's on its way. That's those are the unfunded bandage feet, there's a big one. Okay, so the grand total that's on the bottom, the two point three million. Of the estimated cost of the town, that is. Low. That is it, everything comes out perfect with, and then in our H VAC projects are not that expensive. If they come in and we get our evaluation done, and it's gonna be beyond your C I P process, you're gonna have to bond. You're gonna have to recommend a bond. And so, the issue with that is, you might miss out on the grant. So if you don't put enough money in. Into this C I P budget. To cover your. Amount that we believe you'd have to go to town meeting with. You may be stuck.
And that's the amount of the share, it's not like doing a new school build where you have to use the gross price.
You do have to use the big number, but, correct. You do, so if if the project were fifteen million dollars, the question would say, do you approve fifteen million dollars for H VAC for all the more of school? You use that number, but you would, you would get your sixty-three percent reimbursement off that number. The amount you have to have in your coffers is the, your thirty-seven percent share.
I ask, uh, oh, I got a lot to say, but I'm gonna ask some simple questions, um. Oh, they're not simple, there's nothing simple about this. The H V A C study and the approach that you have anticipated or you're envisioning, I know we don't have the results. You're gonna report, and that's gonna likely change the whole metric here, but what I s- you know, what I see from Christina's initial spreadsheet is is basically a. A a bare-bones facility, like, uh. That's what I'm looking for, a repair list, essentially, it's, this is, this is what we need for repairs, we're not talking about. It's kinda like step one of a larger effort, and what you have underway, we're never gonna get here for this budget, so it really is, um. A need to. Prefund as much as possible to allow for those projects to develop over time. What I will say is this, Phil, I mean, as you're looking at an H R E S, what what concerns me about the way this is packaged and presented here is that it's not presenting projects. It's presenting deficiencies that need correction. H V A C projects, like, we have electrical upgrades for three quarters of a million dollars in here, having year five. The reality is a comprehensive solution from an H R E standpoint that isn't just replacing kind. Um, you know, one-for-one unit events, something that actually works for improvements and increasing ventilation. May very well trigger expensive electrical service upgrades, may very well trigger the hundreds of thousands of dollars for ceiling replacement. That may make sense to, you know, package in conjunction with trying to thread ductwork or uh B R F system or, you know. It comes at piping through, through an old building, so. You know. And we also have multiple ventilation projects on here, and and I don't know. But it would have to, you know, all be blended, but the reality is, this may be a, we've tackled the North Wing and Hall as a project and grouped a whole bunch of stuff together as a, as a thing. And I don't know if you're able to capitalize on reimbursement percentages when you're upgrading electrical service in support of an H R E C. Project, because it's beneficial, so I I'm not gonna go into that whole discussion, I'm just saying, you know. It's another consideration, but the reality is these, you know, it may not just be as simple as replacing kind H R E C. And I do think these costs are gonna be greater. Um, and the reality of it, um. You know, and the other, or the only other comment I'll have is, you know, this really addresses the thing that we're talking about, grant funding, a chimney that needs to come down. We have year five priorities, which is like a secure entrance vestibule at the school, which is not a year five priority, you know. To me, um, and shouldn't be for any of us. You know, it it's, it's. The the projects, and there'll be other upgrades, you know, it's not just a vestibule, it's, it's, um, so it's. The thinking of this as a set of deficiencies that need correction is really, this is just the first step. And I'm dying to get to the the Q A and M, you know, part of this. Even though I don't think it's gonna go anywhere near as far as it needs to be, just by the, you know, the dollar value, but the reality is, there is significant. Design, planning and staging of all of this to make this an efficient effort for the town, um. And my last comment, since I'm probably not gonna be here when you guys present, um, unfortunately, is. It also take, what I don't see in here is somebody is funds for a owner's project manager. That can handle your capital improvement projects over a five-year period, you know, like a a a standing agreement.
This is a one-shot deal.
With somebody.
Then it's a one-shot deal, you're right.
So, you know, is there a, is there a, an annual? O P M costs, that again, is, would be different than the facilities manager role, they are kinda distinctly different. Facilities is really planning upkeep, maintenance, they would take you from having to. Keep you potentially from having to remove grills up the side of the building, because we don't wanna pay fourteen hundred dollars to a firm just to diagnose. Why it's installed wrong, you know, like, that's the sort of savings you get from that, but an O P M helps manage all of this work effect. Because the reality of this is, the disruption to students for any of these projects is gonna be tremendous. I don't think any of these projects are gonna happen in summer, I, it's, it's, the reality is it doesn't. Um, we're seeing, I've had a lot of experience recently where contractors or subcontractors are falling short. And things are getting, we're getting school delays, we're getting that have a significant impact for large summer slimmer type projects. It can be well managed, but it takes that professional support.
Yeah.
And I really think it needs to be captured in here, um. Somewhere, I don't think, it's not a budgetary thing, it really is a. On-call, house doctor type O P M agreement that I think we really should be looking at if we're really implementing. This work, and. With that said, I'll I'll stop, just saying, I know we we've litigated this in the past, but this is almost, to me, still kind of an exercise in insanity. That being said, we gotta do the best we can to get as much out of it, because, I mean. I don't know, I. I I'm not gonna re-litigate the past, but this really is, it's a more challenging effort than I think anybody. Uh, I, I'm sure people realize it, but I don't think enough people realize how impactful this is gonna be, these projects will take kids, will disrupt kids learning, um.
We're trying to puzzle those groups together because they're logically make sense together, we dealt with the roof project at center school. Where we had to open the roof back up and had to get firestone out to make sure we didn't lose our warranty, cause if you lose your warranty, you lose your grant funding. So to do the roof project, the H VAC, you can separate them out, but it's. Better have a facilities manager to to do every check and make sure you don't lose your roof warranty. Which is again, why the H VAC is with the the roofing project and those grants together, it's, it's.
Didn't O S C G R, didn't I hear in a meeting, your discussion with O S C G R basically recommending that you try to tackle those projects together, the H R E C and.
They do, and they recommend solar too, they they will recommend solar as well. But the money has to be there. You know, the million dollars that you put in is is a drop in the bucket compared to what these projects could be. Um, which is why, you know, the board is had had elected to, you know, request a minimum of one point five. And what Donna and I, through our conversations, which I think I bring this to her often, and try and bounce ideas off, and try and problem solve. At what point does it make more sense to bond, that's been our conversation, so that way you have the money and you, you know. And this is your point, Jim, is that if you're stuck and you're like, hey, we now need more money for electrical to be able to do the project that we got funding for. There is no wiggle room in this, what I just put in front of you, that's two point three million dollars. And we're just talking about roofs, and we're just talking about uh heating and cooling and ventilation, which there is no ventilation at all. And then that, those wings, student wings, doesn't exist, there is none, so the windows are open. So that's retrofitting a lot, adding a lot, there's a lot of study that needs to go into those things. Um, and it's, it's a lot of money, the thing that you could drop is the solar, the solar might give you the, some of the payback. It might be that's the only thing that's on there that might, you know, help hit the operating budgets, but again, I'm a, you'd have to do a study to make sure of that. If they couldn't guarantee it, you take solar, but you just saved three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you still did.
Yeah, I mean, the five hundred thousand seems like a reasonable number based on. What I'm saying, and. I just got quotes on recently for another project, actually, but, um, it's probably a smaller system. But the reality is the payback that they're seeing for operational, you know, for the operational savings. You know, the payback on some of these things is in a very small number of years, um. Which is also a very important thing to consider, the reality is, you know, you're looking at a twenty-year lifespan, they could have the. In concept, when this study is done, I expect it's probably gonna see a, you know, a one-to-three-year return on investment on one hundred and eighty that we're putting in after grant reimbursement. And the rest of that is operational savings for utility, which you're gonna heat up the new H R E C project, cause it's gonna get a lot more electrical.
Which is another reason why it's gotta be tied together, this, you know, one of the things we've talked about, if you, we've talked about the upper wing windows being something that needs to be potentially done before you do an H VAC. Cause if you have a single-pane window, and then you do an H VAC system, and then it's not balanced, that doesn't work either. So there's a lot of conversation, it's it's trying to get a sense of before we move to do any one specific project. Q and A, Q A and M is trying to help us line those things up to make sure they make sense, and we're doing them in a logical order, even if it's just to fix it, sorry, Jim. Even if it's just to fix it, um, I can't tell you how bad I'd love to just put this roof to bed, I don't wanna hear about it ever again. Um, it's just where we're at, though.
That's what I'm making, Q A and M.
Uh, hopefully, they'll have a draft report for us at the board's February meeting. But I haven't seen anything yet, I have a push for that.
You're gonna post that after the board looks at it?
Oh, yeah.
So. Just, so the funding piece of it, the timing of it all.
The hardest piece of it, yeah.
Yeah, um, so, so this one point five million minimum, you would need that. At what point in the fiscal year? Um, or do you need that now?
So it's really, and this is the timing of it, it's trying to figure out, the the way I see this project, it would be a July, uh, July one twenty-five project. But to do the work to lead it up to it, you have to have the funding and you have to have the grants, and you have to have your approvals, you need the funding before that.
Right.
So that would be a July one roof project at both buildings. You don't have all your engineering done for your H VAC, you'd be installing all that at the same time. Or it would, it would be coordinated, and then. The solar piece would be the final.
Hmm.
So, the million right now that you have in there is like the chip away, the the way I see it, it's it's all the prep work. So the H VAC evaluation, it's the, um, you know, I mean, honestly, the chimney just becomes that part of that big dollar amount, right? So it's the, the chimney gets done, uh, it could potentially be the upper wing windows at center school, so there's no more single-pane windows up there. So when we do the H VAC study, that's already taken care of, it's it's things like that.
So, somewhere at twenty. July twenty-five.
Correct.
So year two. It's not gonna be year two.
But I think, but we would have to have a town meeting where the money would be in the account. But I think but we would have to have a town meeting where the money would be in the account. Before that, which is next fiscal year.
So I need the HVAC. Stuff that I'm that's like, once I get through budget season, that's my next push, because the sooner I get that study done, if they push another HVAC grant out. I need your approvals to be able to do that, and if if the HVAC comes back back in a reasonable amount of money, that. Is already in the general fund or the million dollars that's there, I could apply for it. Before that even thinking about the roof projects. Cause even if you get the grant and you just say we couldn't get the funding for all of it, that's the end of it. You turn it back, but I mean, that's that is the biggest issue is if you don't do enough money. You can't apply for the grants.
So, yeah, so I mean, they need to. As much as you can bankroll in advance to kind of get that as those is the status quo here, but. Going back to timing. Roots can be done twenty five, H V A C is not gonna be done twenty five. I I don't see that happening from a planning perspective and, you know. The reality is, I think that's a twenty six project and does, you know, that puts the roots back, does that impact?
That's all in the planning stuff, yeah.
So I I think that's a consideration too, is that it might wind up being. A well, then can you construct that in the summer, I don't think you're doing any of these H V A C projects easily in the summer, unless you bite them into pieces, break them into pieces, but. Yeah, it it may be, the timing may fall the three years of day construction project, so whatever that does.
It's the buildup of the funding.
Correct.
To get the grants is so important, that's and and I know you're saying that about the HVAC. But that's not in timeline for the HVAC grant, you have to have your project done by X date.
That's right.
And that X date is set. You might be able to get the extension. The point is, again, this is what Donna and I have gone back and forth on. If you tax. If you build a budget and you hit the taxpayer. At what point do they go, I can't, that's too much? And is it enough to make a difference for the millions? If if it's too much, is it better to just do a bond and have that bond to cover a bunch of your C I P trucks? You know, roads. Firehouse stuff, whatever it may be, you do a bigger bond early on and then you and the board of finance are. Approving those projects as you go based upon your prior the priorities. Um, and the money's there. And you just start to chip away at it, I I don't know if that's this. It's still gonna be expensive, but it's is that a safer way financially? That's where Donna and I have been having conversations.
It's a viable approach, but given the town, you know, I wonder if it gets too big, do you not have money for anything? You know, because the reality is. You go before the town, the fire station is all on point by now, you go before the town with a twenty million dollar bond, it goes nowhere and nobody gets any. Nobody gets any assistance, like a big bond. Effort, I agree, it makes a lot of sense in a in a community that will support it, but we gotta get that.
I'm saying small bond, I'm not saying a big bond, it's not gonna be a new firehouse, I wasn't saying firehouse.
No, I know what I mean, but well, it's gonna be, we got three and a half million for the road improvements, we got probably six million dollars for the school, you know, oh, maybe not that much, whatever. But we got at least one fire station, it's gonna be six million dollars, you know, like it's. That's a big bond.
That's where you need to figure out what that. Amount would be, does it make sense and what's?
Goes nowhere, I I just don't see it happening, so.
Well, it's still and and still what I was trying to get get to with that question about what's the ask of the town? Because there's that hurdle about the game that we have to play where we put the the gross figure on the board sixteen million, say. And and that's what we ask the local voters to approve. Even if you say really, you know, quickly, here here's after reimbursement, here's what it would be. There's still those who don't read that far to get that clause and it's it's a real hard. As we've seen, it's hard to get uh to get beyond that ignorance, if you will, of of how. State grants and funding works.
I had a great conversation with Department of Administrative Services and Office of School Construction Grants Review with Tammy Nuccio. And just to help them understand for a small town, we're trying to do that. And people are just coming out looking at that number for the first time, it doesn't matter how much marketing you've done, it doesn't matter how much social media press we've done, how many mailers we've done, when people see that big price tag. It scares them and rightfully so, right, can I pay for my groceries, can I turn my heat down at my house, we get that. They heard it loud and clear, but it's legislature, it's it's the legislature who has to change that process. Uh, it's not O S C G R, it's not D A S, so Tammy was. Trying to take it to the next, figure out the next step to do that, it's again, we're trying to fight this from, we're trying to look at a better reimbursement rate. And share that really, but it's something that we're trying to do um. But it's there's a lot of eggs in the air right now and the grant funds are gonna dry up from the HVAC perspective. Because they're all tied to COVID funds.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask a question that may have been asked before I did step up for a little while. These schools are in awful shape. Are we as a town at risk of losing these schools and is there a risk of the state shutting them down and saying that they're? Not safe for our students?
No, I don't, it's not that they're not safe, um, you know, nothing's caving in or anything like that, it's just the replacement and constant repairs. Uh, that you have in in older buildings, um, the roofs are a big, big ticket item through, you know, when you have the structure and you're gonna replace. Hundred drill piping, you've gotta knock walls out to do that and that those are the fixes, like when we go into a bathroom to fix a bathroom now. You gotta knock out a concrete wall, a brick wall to to be able to fix piping that might be leaking and all, you know, you know, a wall. I don't see any issue like that at this point, I mean, at some point, if we don't take care of it, something's. It it's not gonna work, right, if it's pouring in every classroom, we just never put a roof on or um.
If you can't keep your temperature between sixty eight and seventy eight.
That stuff matters, right, it's, you know, and it might be. Better do a phase approach, I don't know if phase approach works for a roof. Or for ventilation, I I don't. I I don't know how that would work with the with the H with the roof, you could, but the HVAC grant, I don't know how it does, because the HVAC grant is. Time sensitive and it's gonna shut down.
That's the problem, but, you know, if you're trying to do entirety, yeah, it there's a lot to it, you know, a lot to threading A T R E C through them.
And to do it right.
It it's gonna be, I my bigger worry on that one is you're not getting it done in the summer and then what what are we doing, is there a cost of that, so I don't, it just feels like a lot.
Question that has nothing to do with HVAC.
Yeah.
I see there's two lines in your twenty K for plumbing in both schools, is that twenty K in addition to the twenty twenty K we just spent? New projects, that's that's all I need, so thank you.
It's the sad thing is it's probably not even.
Oh, no, I I I I understand twenty K a year for the red next. You know, it's millennia is probably about right.
Yeah, it's probably, it's plumbing.
Plumbing projects or.
I mean, I'm glad to go through when when I actually present and walk through a bunch of the projects, you've seen a bunch of them already. In the grand scheme of things, I'm just gonna give you what I know, the information we've gathered, if I have the Q A and M information, that will be uh. I'm hoping eye opening and it'll give us some more up, they they might identify projects that are not on your list. They may blow some of our prices out out of the water, I I don't, I don't know that until I see that report um.
Uh, and the other thing in here, just not that uh more of a downer, there's no escalation factor into any of this, if you're doing projects out, like. You have five million, what do you what do you what do we got here in year five for? Uh, I can't find it for some of these things. The three, seven, two, one becomes like. Four and a half million in year five just from a standard four percent, you know, like it. That that's, it just gets more expensive, so it's, you know, they're great in the short term, but we're always without some sort of a scalable factor in here, we're also always going to be underfunding this, and not gonna top of it. Because we will always find those projects shipped out and then we'll tell you that there's not enough money in the project for it. Um, it's just something else we. You know, as a group, kind of need to think about from a planning perspective.
So we, so there is some good news, which is that we did, we put the million dollars in every year. Of the plan for for last year, so. So another. Million is not an increase to our budget. Um, one point five million is is an increase, but. Not. It's not a three million dollar bond payment, so so there's that um.
We're gonna look on the bright side of life there.
I mean, there's that, but but the thing is it. If we bonded, then we then we could control that with with that outlay is each year.
Yes.
And predict what that's gonna be and and presumably keep that below a million dollars. And that's how it would be sustained, but. But that's, but we have to bond for other things too, I know, so so and but. Like in in some ways, one is nothing to do with the other. It 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 will when we're trying to sell it to the town to say yes to, but also they're, they need to understand. All the things that have to get done.
And the three million bond payment in at it at at it at its worst, that's not, you know, that's not certainly not spread over the the life of the bond is. Uh, was was in was a full up complete solution versus. This is what portion of what needs to be done in whole. This is for starters. So I'm asking you, is this a third, is this a tenth, what is the?
I don't have the.
But.
I don't have an answer, I don't know.
I know.
All all I can tell you is 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 these are the biggest priorities. That have to get done sooner than later. And the grant funds tied to it is nice, I I think Q A and M will be able to answer that question for us.
Mm hmm.
Um, again, it just comes back to that. Donna and my conversation saying that extra money would, when you bond, right, and you're you're bonding five million, you're actually paying out. Nine million over twenty years, something like that, right, you're almost doubling. And would the taxpayer rather do something like that or, uh, you know. Be hit for a year and then drop it down, I don't know if that's ever been done, I have no idea, but there's gotta be some sort of. Short term solution to this, which was Christine's million last year, thank you, it's a great start. We've gotta keep that going to at least get. No pun intended, but pun intended, a roof over our head at both schools.
Uh, I mean, to that point, fellow, a lot of the argument with the new school bonds, like why would we pay this interest, you know, why would we pay? Uh, we're looking at it and I think actually it might have been you Christine, I've even had some numbers, you know, like we're. We're paying this much in interest, why can't we chip at it incrementally and that's, you know, where we're really kind of at now if that's the decision, but we're still. Bonding, you know, we're still in the same situation again and and I don't know.
No, that was an agreed upon. Effort to do, you know, to to start that way, because either way we went, we were gonna need it.
Yeah, either way.
Either way, so it was even without a decision, because it was before the referendum, of course. And we decided to do that. Came up with the shock absorber.
Shock absorber.
That's cool, so.
It didn't work though, it's still shocking.
It's not, it's not good shock absorber for the whole vehicle, just for one of the tires.
I'm gonna battle for the schools, that's my job. My job is, I I mean, we know it's a piece. But that, we're trying to find the the things that make sense where the, I would, I would hate to see us miss out on on potential cost savings. If they existed, you know, a solar study was there and said that's the right thing to do, I'd hate to miss out on that, I'd hate to miss out on an HVAC grant. But we may if we don't put the dollars on the front side of something. And I hope it's not five and ten million and.
You're coming back to us with all this in a couple of weeks, right?
Yeah, right, um.
The only thing I'm asking that is I'm wondering about calling this question, I'm freezing.
I just wanted to give you the snapshot.
Right, thank you, I I understand, yes.
And I I appreciate that because next next week we hear from the fire department.
I beat him to it.
It's like we're ceding to the great adjournor.
Um, no, that that is it.
I moved to adjourn.
I'll second, all in favor.
I.
Coming go.
Yes, thank you very much. Have a good day.
I only have one thing that I'm an expert at and that's the journey.
Thank you guys for the robust discussion at the board.
I have, I'll just, I'll, I'll give you the, who do you contact the cop?